Okay, we're gonna get started now. Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the City Council FY26 Policy and Priorities Working Meeting on June 27, 2025. We're gonna start today with the Pledge of Allegiance, and Jesse, would you like to lead? Go ahead to the back of the room.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item two on the agenda, Instructions on Excellent the Building in a Case of Emergency Review of Technology Upends, Jesse Baker.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming. We have both a full room and a full Zoom, which is great for a Friday morning. If there is an emergency in this room, you can go out the door and go either left or right to the staircase and either corner of the building. If you have difficulty getting down the stairs, go to the left, walk all the way down the hall, and there's a respite place there for folks to come. If you are joining us remotely, thank you for being here as well. If you'd like to speak during an item on the agenda, please turn your camera on and the chair will call on you. Otherwise, or indicate in the chat that you would like to speak, and I will have the chair call on you. Otherwise, we are not monitoring the chat for content. And forgive me for a minute, I'm going to do our host thing, but keep going, Tim.
Thanks. Item three, which is Agenda Review. Do we have any additions, deletions, or changes in the order of agenda items?
Glory to the DPRK thugs! Glory to the DPRK thugs! Glory, having hacked by the DPRK thugs! Glory to the DPRK thugs! Fuck niggers! Fuck niggers! Fuck niggers! Fuck niggers! Fuck niggas! Fuck faggots! Fuck fucking specks! Fuck fucking Jews! Fuck them fucking all!
I'm trying.
Forget there. Forget there. Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
Isn't it very nice?
Yeah, no.
It's happened before.
It's happened before, so, yeah.
This video.
Yeah. Yeah. So. So I take it there are no changes to the agenda this morning? Okay, great. We're pretty immune to this stuff, we, you know. It doesn't happen very often anymore, but sometimes it still does. And now, we have item four, which is comments and questions from the public that are not related to today's agenda. Do we have? I think we probably do have some comments. Jimmy, did you wanna give the comment first, or whoever? Sure. So we need you just to identify yourself and then give us the room.
Okay. Can I sit?
If you'd like, but if you wanna stand up, it's up to you.
Okay.
Okay. And use a big voice.
Okay, I'll try to talk about it. So my name is Jeannie Zagorski. We're here to share a brief bit of information about a petition that we've just sent around to the city of South Burlington to preserve the Wheeler Park. I do have these I'd just like to share with you.
Sure.
Right here. There we go. I can have got it, so. Okay. So. We did go to court last year to try and get the Environmental Court to work with us on this, and that didn't work out so well. So we went to the Supreme Court this spring, or winter, and that didn't work out the way we hoped either. So now we're here to talk to South Burlington about what we're trying to move forward with. A little bit of history. Last, this is about the parcel buildout that Jam Golf owns in Wheeler Nature Park, the 6.9 acres. Last year, we had sixty fact witnesses.
Across the street, it's not in it.
That, yeah?
Could you please let her speak?
Okay, let's be truthful.
Let her speak.
Last year, we had sixty fact witnesses in the neighboring areas that wanted to support protecting the Wheeler Nature Park as a whole before it was parceled off with that one parcel of 6.9 acres. Twenty of them took the time to testify in court when we were in court for five days, which was pretty honorable. All of, in support of protecting the nature park as a whole. Last Saturday, we sent out a petition, which you all have now. And within five days, we got 294 signatures in support of keeping the park the way it was before this parcel was separated out. Which is pretty huge, I think, and makes a big statement. We are just wanting to set a precedence here where we don't keep cutting into a park that's supposed to be preserved forever in perpetuity. And if we keep doing that, we're gonna have no park left. There will be nothing left, if that's, if that's what's gonna be happening for future buildouts. So we are asking, or calling on the South Burlington to speak to Jam Golf. The outline that I've just given you talks about the fix at the bottom, or potential fix, where we could potentially, or South Burlington could potentially buy the parcel from Jam, encourage them to donate it for tax benefit, or even possibly approve a buildout for Jam-owned land where they can move that parcel buildout to their own, to another place outside the park. That's, that's my message. So we're just asking for some help here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anybody else wanna speak on this? The same subject? Do you have the same thing? Do you, do you, do you want, Jimmy, do you wanna go first, or you want? Okay, go ahead, please.
Hi, everybody. My name is Katie Cameron, and I grew up in Dorset Park. I then spent a decade away in Minneapolis. And there I witnessed overdevelopment of green spaces and the impacts that it had on the community. Specifically, overpriced apartment complexes. Not only did the physical construction impact the community, but constructing these very specific types of housing scenarios while there's a very real need for affordable housing, just further to class divide within the city area, and that directly increased the violence that was experienced in this Altus area because of it. And moving back home to Vermont, a state where I view as admirably and fiercely defending nature and green spaces, I was really just starting to learn about the Wheeler Land Divide and find out that that similar trend is happening in our own town. On a personal note, my partner and I would walk through trails of Wheeler Park two to three times a day. We noticed really fragile animals, like the piliated woodpecker, the American woodcock. You know, there's deer, there's a bunch of fungi there. It's a really gorgeous and very fragile ecosystem with a lot of protected species that find in there. I also have recognized there to be an underwater spring, and my concern is construction runoff and how that would impact the underwater spring. We talk about how this is no longer Wheeler Park land, but if we're continuing to sub the back of the plan. And also considering the impacts of runoff on this fragile ecosystem. There's just so much to treasure in that space, and I think it would benefit the entire community to really take a pause and thoughtfully look at it. I don't know if anybody's had a chance to see the fireflies in the evening. It's really magical, and it's also a great space for community. We've met so many of our neighbors there. We've bridged so many. Oh, I just realized the camera turned to me. Hi, everybody! I thought it was being slipped by sitting behind the door. We've really, we've bridged generational gaps. We are in a tangible, magical, gorgeous space where nature and humans are able to coexist, and my deep concern is for really ruining what we have that's so special. And so I just wanted to take the time to show up and articulate those, those really passionate thoughts that I have. So thank you for hearing me, and I think I ended up with them too.
Thank you.
And Eric Griffin online has indicated he would like to speak on this.
Okay, let's go online then.
Now we have to go through that.
Thank you. I was able to get unmuted. Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you. Eric Griffin, a fifth-generation Vermonter, twenty years in Polton, Vermont, and thirty years in South Burlington. And I know it's, it's late in the game for a Vermonter to make an impassioned plea, but I'd like to, as an engineer, make a, make an objective assessment, too. I certainly have a lot of heart about this area, but I also feel like it is not a prudent fiscal move for, for our town. I've been going biking by to work to the hospital for those thirty years every day on the bike path, and I ran into a German couple watching their dogs jump through a frame of the beautiful view, and I realized that thousands of people go by this every day. I was living at Indian Creek when the Heatherfield went in between Dorset and Spear, and I realized, yeah, it was sad to see the displacement of the moose there, and but thousands of people didn't go by, and they did a good job putting in the, the water runoff, and there's still songbirds in there. But it wasn't a place where thousands of South Burlington and people around the world went by. It wasn't a shared view, and they did a good job between the interstate and Indian Creek. And that sort of development made sense. This one, I feel the city is sacrificing a $200 million natural view for a small number of people to have a place to live. And I want everyone to have a nice place to live, but I really feel like it's a cutting off an artery when we need to be more surgical. I think we can find places. This one's not the right one, where you have a, a nature center and an arbor, you know, a nice arbor for Tree City USA that we are. And we have a Wheeler Park, and we have a nice rec park for our kids. I, I don't have kids. I, I pay $9,000 a year in taxes, never had kids, because I believe it makes a great environment, and we know it makes it better if we have good schools. If we have a place where we have a park and a band shell and baseball fields and a dog park and the Wheeler Park, this is really a place you can't get back. I, I feel it's priceless, but if someone came along and said, yeah, the developer's gonna give you $200 million just to take away your view, you might have to do it. But otherwise, I think you're, you're losing millions of dollars of quality of life for thousands of people, for a few people. And it's very late in the game. I think the money, it's, it's big money, but owning that land for the many is really a smart fiscal choice to not cut off the seven generations of quality of life for thousands of people for some homes that are actually less attractive than the ones we put in Heatherfield. So I'm sad when I see spaces go, but this one's a big one that I don't think it's too late to say, oh, yeah, this is a seven-generation place that we shouldn't sacrifice for one generation. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
And also indicated that you would like.
Okay, I just wanna say that, you know, we have a very long agenda today for this meeting, and we have, have the petition submitted with 294 signatures, right? We've heard from a prime presenter, another person, another person. Are all the other people in here that wanna, you know, give comment, commenting on this particular item in support of it? Except for you, you have a different comment?
I wanted to comment about pool and rec center.
Okay, so you have a different, a different subject matter comment on it. So is it okay that we can assume that everybody that wants to comment on this is gonna, is in support of this petition? Right? And is gonna say about the thing, thing, pretty much? Okay. All right, so this is, this is a new item, like this, it's not on our agenda today, so I, I don't wanna cut you short, but we received the petition, we hear your, your message, right? And if, if you're willing, I'd like to not have to take, you know, comment from everybody in support of this, right? Because it would be a little bit redundant, I think, even though I understand that they all have, you know, great feelings about it, so.
And I just showed a picture of you.
So Jimmy, do you wanna send me now? You wanna comment now? Sure. And how can, can you let him?
Yep. Yep.
So make sure you identify yourself before you start commenting.
I'll get started now while she's putting up the picture.
There you go, Jimmy.
And you got about two minutes, okay?
Okay, so the view that you're going to see, the Snow Peak Mount Mansfield is across the open field in, in the foreground of the Wheeler Parcel that you've just heard comments about. And this view was called spectacular in the 2016 South Burlington City Plan. It's the, it's the view from pretty much the highest point, or one of the highest points on the ridge that's adjacent, that goes along the east side of Dorset Street. And the pictures, one of them is from the Y Trail that extends across the parcel itself. And this is accessible, this wide unpaved trail is accessible from the rec path at the corner of Dorset and Park. And it go, extends north towards the tree farm and the red Wheeler House in the distance. The, the other picture is gonna be from across Dorset Street. So you're looking, it's in the winter, so you can see Mount Mansfield in the distance, snow-tapped Mount Mansfield in the distance is the other picture. And if, if there's a problem getting it up, I happen to have, I happen to have a picture right here that we can pass around. It's on, it's figure twenty-two. Let me just open to those pages.
Do you want to just pass that around instead? That's fine.
There, there are two pictures there. One, okay.
Twenty-two and twenty-three?
No, it's just twenty-two, but there's two pictures in twenty-two.
Okay.
Now, one thing I wanted to mention beyond the pictures is that there's been a remarkable change in the city since the decision was made in 2015 to trade this land to Jam Golf, and that is what we see right outside the door of our new city overall, which is more than a dozen huge apartment buildings. And those are, those are rental housing that are gonna be filled with perhaps close to a thousand apartments. People who would really benefit, as others have said, from keeping this parkland accessible from the rec path. They can ride down, it's a short ride down from these apartments to that enormously valuable piece of property, and from the rec path, they can see across the traditional Vermont view from the rec path. This is what Mr. Griffin said, it's so valuable, said it so well. This is such a gem for our city. No, who else has that? And it's a public park, a public rec path. And now we have this suburban development right in the way, obscuring it. It would be such a shame. The city has the strongest influence to speak to Jam, to make a change in the decision. And so that's what the petition is about. I would just remind you that after the Supreme Court made a decision last year about another area in South Burlington, Burton Snowboard, they won the case at the Supreme Court, and then they changed their mind and decided not to have higher ground, ground come in for their music, music activities. So this is something that has been done before, and I think that, I hope that the City Council will put this on the agenda for the Monday meeting and and to ask the city, the city manager or the deputy manager to talk to Jam, see if something can be worked out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jimmy. So we're gonna stop taking comments on this particular subject matter. Is there any other comment from the public? Please, identify yourself and.
Amy Allen, I live up the hill from the construction. It's across the street from the park. It's not in the park. Every single housing unit that goes in there is that many fewer cars. They're gonna be looking for parking for events at Wheeler and Veterans, and everybody with kids can tell you a story of people being late because they couldn't find places to park. They'll be able to walk. This is what we should be doing, building next to parks.
Is that it?
Yep.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from the public, either online or in the room?
So Jonathan Bloom did indicate he wanted to chat.
Jonathan, can you hear us?
Yes.
Did you wanna speak about something different than Wheeler?
No, it's about Wheeler.
Okay, can you make it fairly brief?
I will. The Wheeler Park was established in perpetuity. In 2015, Jam traded a, a area which basically is adjacent to the golf course on the other side near Butler Farms, which is mostly wetlands. And they traded for this area, and I think that they should have just been given this area to be shepherds of it, because this area is supposed to be preserved in perpetuity. And they should be the new shepherds of the area because they, they, they got it in trade for twenty-two acres of pretty much useless land, I believe. And they should keep this park as a park. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Any other comments? Okay, great. We're gonna move on to item five now, which is to hold a working meeting and discussion on the FY26 policy priorities and strategies. And at a future date, the council will consider approval of the final draft of these policy priorities and strategies. Jesse Baker, City Manager. Do you wanna pause for a second? Do you folks wanna leave, or you wanna stay? Because, all right, because if you wanted to leave, then we will give you a couple minutes to leave.
Is this the open forum session?
Yes.
I wanted to talk about a pool and a rec center. Were that under the heat plan, or now?
Uh, I think you should wait.
Okay. Morning.
Good morning.
How's everyone doing? Full house. So, thank you all for coming. My name's Jesse Baker. I have the privilege of serving as your city manager. This is our annual working meeting between the leadership team and the city council to develop our shared work plan for FY26. In your packet is a set of recommended policies and strategies from the leadership team. That is the primary document we'll be working off of. But I've tried to keep the rest of the agenda fairly loose for council to take this conversation where you would like to take it. I do think it would be worth doing a full round of introductions. We have some new folks at the table this year. So, Tim, if you're okay with that, we'll spend some time doing that, and then I will walk us through what, what our task is today, and then we'll have a discussion about how to, how to facilitate the breakout sessions. Sound good? Great. So I'm Jesse.
Steve Locken. Steve Lock, the Deputy City Manager slash Barge.
Keep going.
Keep going.
John Simpson, I'm Chair of the South Burlington Cemetery Sextus.
Jared Halloran, I'm the Deputy City Attorney.
I'm Maddie Sousa, I'm the HR Manager.
Anna Dubrowski, I'm the Data Manager.
Good morning, Paul Connor, Planning Zone Director.
Patina Megas, Climate Action Manager.
Good morning, Rich Donahue, Deputy Finance Director.
Alana Blanchard, Community Development Director.
Erica Collin, Deputy Director of Capital Projects.
Tom DiPietro, Director of Public Works.
Sean Briscoe, Acting Police Chief.
Martha McChale, Finders Club.
Adam Math, Director of Recreation and Parks.
Smiling at your minute's take.
Elizabeth Fitzgerald, Counselor, the voice.
You always have a voice. I'm Senator, Chair of City Council and newly baptized last night in the dump tank at.
Andrew Tannock, Vice Chair of the City Council, also newly baptized.
Mike Scanlon, City Council, City Council Clerk.
Laurie Smith, City Council.
I'm Colin McNeil, I'm the City Attorney.
Great, and Nick, we'll go back to you.
Did you grow, IT Director?
Andy Brumhofer, Communications and Outreach Manager.
Jennifer Murray, Library Director.
You want the audience?
Keep going, Nick.
And you, longtime South Burlington resident.
Peter Taylor, Seminary Sexton, I'm on the Charter Committee.
Linda Bailey, I'm also on the Charter Committee and a Justice of the Peace.
Amy Allen, I'm a South Burlington resident and public school parent.
Jimmy Lee, longtime South Burlington resident.
Jeannie Zagorski, South Burlington resident.
Paige Zagorski, South Burlington resident.
And if it's okay with folks, I'm gonna skip the online interactions, but we do have a number of folks online as well. So I'm gonna start with, again, a kind of an orientation to this morning's conversation and the work we're all here to do together. So our policy priorities and strategies is a process that I think this is my ninth time I've gone through this between a leadership team and an elected body, which is exciting. It's an attempt to make sure that we are aligned in the work we are doing over the course of the fiscal year. So in a council manager form of government, there are almost unlimited things we could be doing every day as staff to further the vision of the community, and we wanna make sure that we, as your professionals, are doing the things that our policymakers and our community want to do. So this is, this conversation today is a step towards finalizing that shared work plan between the leadership team and the council. It is the leadership's team obligation, all the department heads of the city are obligation to bring you our professional expertise. Everyone around this table has education and experience in their specific content area, and it is our obligation to bring forward that expertise. It is also our obligation to fully implement the policy the council sets for, on behalf of the community. So once we have an adopted work plan that you all have, the council has the final say in adopting, we will implement that work plan. This process really focuses on the change we're trying to make in the community, the, the innovation, the community change aligned to the city plan and other master plans. It is not an inventory of all the things the city does. So to that end, I would ask you to remember that nowhere in this document do we talk about responding to calls for service, or checking out library books, or processing invoices, or issuing permits, or defending lawsuits, that this is really about those one-time new initiatives, new projects, or policy changes we're trying to make. But we wanna hold all that other core government work we're doing at the same time to respect the capacity of the team. So we try and be very intentional about what are all of our, each of our authorities and roles in this conversation. So the City Council also, obviously, ultimately is the holder of the policy decisions of the city that includes both ordinance, policy documents, and the city budget. Your key questions are to ask, are things the right things to do? What are you hearing from the public? Are you willing to adopt a budget and financial support to further priorities? And the leadership's team's responsibility in partnership with our staff, we have about, you know, a hundred and seventy-five staff behind us working on implementing core government, is to implement those policy decisions you make, bring our professional expertise to the table, and talk with you about the implications of your policy decisions as you're considering what to do. So technical expertise, implementation, and then provide the management and administrative oversight of the shared work plan. Together, our authorities march together, pulling in the same direction is really what us, what allows us to hold that community thrust. I think in past years, I have not done a great job in these conversations of also celebrating where we've been. We have done an enormous amount of work together in the last four years, and I think a lot of that has been driven by past policies and priorities conversations. So I thought it was important to just quickly run through just a selection of the successes we have had together. That includes securing a new finance system and working towards implementation, a new permitting system. We secured consultants and launched our Economic Development Strategic Plan, our parking strategy, and our Parks and Open Space Master Plan. I know a lot of you are working on one of, or all of those. We've launched efforts to make data-driven decisions and onboarded staff to do that. We've adopted a climate action plan and hired staff to implement that climate action plan. We've launched, launched a rental registry. We've completed the climate action plan, the city plan, the active transportation plan, and the Equity and Planning Toolkit. We secured funding to close the financial gap in the Bike Ped Bridge project, and that project is currently out to bid. We've bid out the Boardwalk Project, two of our key TIF projects. We permanently conserved Wheeler Park. We secured funding and bid out our second water tower. We secured funding and designed the Bartlett Bay upgrades to our waste, Bartlett Bay wastewater treatment plant. We've made a number of ordinance changes and land development regulation updates, and we have, through Jennifer and Adam, significantly increased our programming through the library and recreation departments. Again, this is just a selection, but a huge amount of work that the council and the team has done in the last couple of years.
Small golf player.
So some things, for those of you who have been through this process with us before, some things that are slightly different and new this year, as you know, that this isn't necessarily best practice, this is a creation of our minds, this process. So we try and tweak it and make it a little better every year. So this year, we have oriented the efforts around types of work, so capital projects, master plans, et cetera, to try and understand capital projects, master plans, et cetera, to try and understand together what are those types of work we will do over the course of the year. We've tried to add more specific detail around what specifically we're committing to um achieving in FY twenty six. Uh, that's the fiscal year that starts next week. Um, and this is our attempt to, as we become more of a data-driven organization, um, give more finite, um, set more finite expectations that we can regularly report on, both to the council and the community. Um, and uh work towards fully implementing our city plan. Um, so one of the things that's in your packet for today that we probably will not spend a whole lot of time talking about is a list of all the goals and actions in the city plan that aren't specifically referenced in the policies and strategies document this year. That does not mean we're not working on them. We may be working on them in another area. Uh, but over the course of the year with Anna's leadership, we're really um trying to be more diligent about how we're reporting on that products. So the key question for today that I will keep coming back to is what is the most important things to see progress on in the next twelve months? There is a universe of work we could be doing in the next twelve months, and we're really trying to hone in on what are the most important efforts for us to further. And this is the, the reining in expectation slide. So going into FY twenty six, we are not starting with a blank slate, right? We are on a moving train together. We are furthering an enormous amount of work that we have already kicked off. And we would, we as the leadership team really want to make sure that we can continue that work and do it well um as we think about what else to focus on throughout the fiscal year. So going into FY twenty six, we have a lot of organizational leadership change coming. Uh, we are in the process of hiring a new police chief. Uh, we are in the process of recruiting our next library director. We are recruiting a new stormwater team. And towards the end of this fiscal year, we'll be onboarding our next deputy city manager. Why, you might ask?
I will be stepping out of that role.
Because?
I will be assuming the president of the IFC, the National Association of Fire Chiefs, which is, will keep me busy.
He will stay our fire chief. He will just not be. Um, so a lot of leadership change in the next twelve months. Um, we are also uh well on our way to a lot of our modernization efforts or attempts to be more effective and efficient as a, a leadership team. Um, so we are um midstream in implementing our online permitting system and implementing our new financial management system. Um, and using data, centering data and how we make operational and policy decisions. And in thinking about parking management strategies, both for city center and potentially citywide. Um, we are also uh mid-path in building or implementing a significant number of master plans. So we are about to receive our final draft of our economic development strategic plan. Uh, we are halfway through the development of our parks and open space master plan. We are kicking off our growth management efforts. We've adopted our climate action plan and our active transportation plan. So all of those plans come with expectations we are setting with the community about additional priorities that we will take on. This year, we're working on eighty-four million dollars of capital projects. That doesn't mean we're gonna spend eighty-four million dollars in FY twenty six. It means that of all the capital projects we're, we're actively working on this year, it's actually more than eighty-four million. This is just the select number of that totals eighty-four million, those, those significant one-time, one-time capital projects that you all regularly talk about. And then, of course, uh, we are implementing our core government every day. So expecting an FY twenty six um about eighteen thousand call, uh, public safety calls for service, maintaining a hundred and sixty-six miles of roads, path and sidewalks, processing eleven thousand invoices, and you can see the other high-level statistics there. So we're doing a lot of things and we're, we want, we want our, we want to demonstrate success and continue success as we move those projects forward. So, um, transitioning into specifically our work today. So the council has uh packets in front of them of all of this information. All of these documents are also linked to the agenda for today if you are online or have access to um the website. So the leadership team is recommending a set of policy priorities and strategies to you with uh forty-nine specific items that we are going to further this year. Again, those are organized by capital projects, master plans, operations reviews and uh review and improvements, partnerships and engagement, regulation or ordinance updates, and study and research. Those are also posted around the room. The four posters you see taped to the wall, sorry, Erica and Tom to take things to the walls, um, are uh what the leadership team recommendations are. Uh, we also have, the leadership team is also recommending eleven items for the bike rack. Um, this is things that we think are, are important, that we have heard from you or from others, but we don't necessarily intend to make progress on this year. Um, we also want to note that there are a number of items in this plan that will have significant FY twenty-seven budget implications. Um, that budget process, well, staff will kick off that budget process in August and September. That will come to the council in September for initial goal setting and uh December for discussion. Um, we think it's important to call out that this work plan may have other financial implications over time. Um, we also included uh the list of ideas that council has previously submitted as part of the retreat and ideas that Kate have come in through yesterday um that are, that may overlap with some of these and may be new items for discussion today. And then we've also received um recommendations from our policy committees on their work plans for the year, and those are in front of you as well. Unfortunately, we had only received one of these by the time we did our leadership team report. So we have not necessarily fully crosswalked those two sets of recommendations. But ideally, as you adopt your set of policy priorities and strategies, you will also approve the work plans for the committees, again, to keep us aligned. The NRCC one has not included yet. So that's the overview. Does anyone have any questions about uh what we're trying to achieve here or this process? So what I would, how I have thought we could spend time today is for the council to uh review the materials the committees have um submitted um and think about, um, are there things on there you want to have intentional discussions about? Um, are there things that you want to make sure staff is focusing on this year? Um, and do that crosswalk. So I thought that that would be a group of work you might want to consider. Then I think we should have an intentional uh period of time where you um have dots, I have markers. The council gets up and walks around the room and looks at the set of recommendations and thinks about things to add or delete or reword or change that are up there, and then we can have a conversation about those. And then I've kept some intentional time at the end for fine tuning we need to do. However, in our past retreats with the council, um, you all have done really phenomenal job of guiding conversations in new and different ways. So if there is another approach you would like to take today, we tried to bring all of our facilitation materials and we can pivot in another direction if you would like to take another approach. But that is the the speaking part of the program. Um, Anna also um will, once I take the slides down, uh can project up the um active worksheet and make changes as we go as well.
Would it make sense to give the public that's here and not really now first to make comments and then they should stay or not? Makes sense.
Yeah, I guess so. Um, but about these subjects, right, yeah, yeah. So is there anybody in the public that have any comments on this? Linda? Make sure, is that about yourself again?
Yep, hi, Linda Bailey.
And a couple of things, I went through this stuff yesterday before I came in, so I know what I was talking about. Um, one of the things, we have our new economic development master plan, which should be finalized and presented within the next three or four weeks. But I see on this that there are no plans to do anything with it until FY twenty-seven, a year from now. Uh, I don't know if there are any pieces that, when you look at the finished product, you can implement around a lot of costs to them or start using it now before it's been sitting for a long time. The second thing that I noticed on this is, and it might be in those background things, Jessie, that you were talking about. Over the last while, and very prominently in the last little while, AI has been a big conversation out in the world. Is there anything that the city is doing to be prepared for either using it or the changes that it's going to make in how our city works? I thought that might be a subject that you need a little bit of looking at, since it looks like it's moving very, very quickly. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm here actually, Andrew has invited me to be here. Representing the South. Andrew and Laurie, really. Um, we have been very busy and we are looking to have uh hoping that you will cooperate and and focus on some of the stuff we think is important this coming year. One of which is a set of rules and regulations which, well, from Andrew and Laurie, we drafted and sent out to the the manager and to all of the city councils. Uh, because I would like to very much for you to spend some time reviewing that. Probably have, um definitely have Colin look at it as a city attorney. And if possible, in this year, get it adopted. So then we can move forward to hire or appoint a uh cemetery administrator. And then be able to lift the moratorium we have right now on sale of lots in the cemetery. And the reason that's becoming more important is that many of you may know we received a anonymous gift of fifty thousand dollars for the beautification of the Alfred Cemetery, which is the one out by the, by the airport. And we're in the middle of doing our planning for that. It'll be a two-year process. It will include plantings, memorial garden facilities for burying uh cremated remains and having a memorial garden. And so forth. And we just actually, there's just a, a woman, uh, from, reporter from other people called the other day. I went out and was interviewed by her at the cemetery yesterday. So there will be an article in the other paper about the cemetery. So all of that is going to lead to public focus, or at least awareness, more awareness of that cemetery and its uses. So I think it's timely that we get back into the business of selling cemetery plots and allowing the public to use what is a public place uh at a much greater level. So I hope you can add it to your list of tasks this year. And that we will be happy to work with you and, and get this done.
Thanks, John. Somebody online? Do you have anything else you want to?
Just make sure that we've got an opportunity for Elizabeth and I to talk.
Sure, sure. You want to do that now?
Not sure what the right slot is. It may be worthwhile to go through some of this first.
So that is your, your effort. Um, we can start with committees, we can start with the council, we can start with leadership team.
What's your point?
I want to start with leadership team, but we are clearly a little biased. Alright, so why don't we uh get do some, get up and walk around activities? Um, unless the council feels ready to just walk through the spreadsheet. Um, I would suggest that um the council spends some time with um a marker or pencil, write on there what you want to change or what you want to add and put red dots on things you want to take off. If you want to emphasize something, you can put a blue dot on, although that hasn't worked. I think red dots are more effective than blue dots in our, in my experience. Um, and we can spend maybe fifteen minutes doing that until ten o'clock and then come back and talk through some of that stuff and then maybe integrate in what your, what the counselors.
Do we have the, is the bike rack up here too?
The bike rack is not up here. This is just the leadership team.
These are recommendations. So, and so the stuff that Elizabeth and I submitted is not up there either, then?
So it's some of the things that we could usually refer to, but we did not cross-reference, we didn't have that list when we filled this list.
Just, sorry. Jessie, but I, I take it that the leadership team and itself believes that each of these are one, very important and maybe already in progress and would be um, you're not recommending that we remove any of them.
We are not recommending that you remove any of them, but that is your policy prerogative. You can, and our, our role here is if you are recommending adding on a bunch of things and removing a bunch of things, that we have an obligation to tell you what the implications of removing those things are.
And so, so.
I was just gonna say, um, you're recommending that we not remove anything. Along with that, you're also recommending that if we don't remove anything, we don't add anything. Is that correct?
Don't present it as the ideal way to go. Um, having said that, you know, I think if you look across what you, what the council has submitted and what the committees have submitted, you know, we've had this conversation before, they are wildly different in the, in the level of effort. So it is very, you know, if you want to add in renaming a committee and recharging a committee, that's a very low lift. We can do that easily. If you want to add in building a new bridge over the interstate, that's a much heavier lift that we're gonna push back.
Okay, I'll give a specific example. Uh, getting the rules and regulations for the cemetery administration uh run through and Colin reviewing what he initially reviewed and getting a, a home for the uh cemetery administrator. How big a lift is that? Is that hard to add to this, or is that something that couldn't be incorporated?
Yeah, I don't necessarily think that's hard, but it's has to be in in, taken into consideration with all the other conversation we will have throughout the day. So that's why I think it would be useful for you all to put up the things you want to add, so then we can go through and have a comprehensive conversation about the totality of it. And just a note on that particular one, that is also has a financial piece, right? So that's just further commit, future committing a, a money obligation.
How do we add?
Take a pen and you write it up.
Because I mean, look, from my perspective, I know we, we've gone through most of these in past years, and I know already that you will passionately defend each of these items if we put a red, and we're gonna conclude that we should go forward with them. I, I believe that's what's gonna happen, honestly. So I'm not sure it really makes a lot of sense to put red dots because it's gonna, I, I, I think it's mostly gonna be a waste of time.
I, I want red dots.
You want red dots?
Okay, okay, even if you could put it down, at least you have.
Conversation started.
Yeah.
What's on this list is basically what we've supported in the past and has aligned itself. Uh, I think this is what Andrew was very, very into. The city plan, which is sort of the plan and the progression, you know, you give the, the city plan, then you have the framework studies underneath it, then you have the certain capital projects aligned to it. So basically, this is an outflow of, of what has, we all have collectively agreed is necessary to advance the city plan as, as adopted. So if we were to take things away from it, depending, again, you know, is it a framework uh plan like the, you know, parks and recs and open space plan? Or is it something smaller? It will have an implication on sort of the the pace with which we implement the city plan. So I would tend to agree with Andrew that, you know, yes, Tim, we can mark, mark something there, but I guess you then explain to us, well, if you guys didn't delete this, this is the implication. Or, I mean, so that will be the process afterwards. Great, because I think right now, what you guys have laid out is, is a priority, and I think getting those tons, for me at least, makes the most sense in terms of marching forward to the city plan. On your, I guess, bike rack, uh, uh, bike rack list, uh, this is something that is currently not in it, and we would add, are you suggesting that these are things that would not dramatically impact the priorities that we've listed, or you're just saying, you, you may want to think about this, this list of, I think, uh, ten items here?
So Steve pointed out an important thing about that. Thank you for bringing up. So the bike rack items are up here. They're just integrated into so, um, on the master spreadsheet, it has a status column. So the status column, if it says bike rack in the status column, it's on the bike rack. So this is all of the leadership team recommendations and bike rack.
So you're saying you could incorporate the bike rack issues that you proposed with all these other things and, and basically have the staff capacity to do it?
So the bike, you know, the bike rack, they're, they're hard to universally say what they are. There are some things that we think just. It's a really great idea. We really want to work on it, not this year. We don't want to, but we don't want to lose the idea. So we're keeping it there. There are also things on there that we have heard you guys say not a priority right now, but has been an idea in past years and we're not, we don't want to lose it. So. For example, the chart, two charter changes are currently on the bike rack that are listed here, all resident voting and expanded council. You have told us you don't want to work on that, where, but. Some of you have told us you don't want to work on that. That's fine. We have lots of other priorities to do. But they're ideas that we've heard from a committee on, we've heard from community on, we just don't want to lose them in the larger scheme of things. So I don't think all the bike rack things you won't want to work on either. We just don't want to lose the good ideas over time.
So, um, I think it does make sense and maybe we each spend five minutes going through the ideas we submitted, cause. It doesn't make sense to me to scribble them on the page whenever we send them in text. So can I just go through?
Sure, go ahead. Let me, before you start, is everybody comfortable with the temperature in here? Is it too cold, too warm? Is it a little bit too cool? Do you mind if we just up to by two? Peter? You can only go up two, right?
Make it ninety.
Go ahead.
Okay, so there are some items on the bike rack that I think are, I'm not gonna repeat those, because we can all do that together with our reds and greens. Just fleshing out a little bit of the sexes. I think that work would be facilitated by the city appointing a cemetery administrator. To review those rules and regs. Now, I think it's not all legal. I think there's a lot of policy questions and. Staffing questions and questions of ownership that a person in that role. If there were a person in a role, it'd be really helpful and I'm, I'm kind of persuaded by all the work we've done. That this is actually a really important thing for the city and that we should, we should try and do that. So that's one of the things.
Of course I do that. I just want to say, Jesse, you talked about a, a price tag attached to it and I think that's accurate. But going through. The process with the, with the Sextons. It's laborious to go through everything. But the two city cemeteries that we have are pretty small. And the amount of work that's actually involved in administering it. It's certainly not a full-time position and where it ends up, I think. Getting it started is gonna take some work, but I think once it's up and running, it's gonna be a, a pretty small. Lift for whoever is that cemetery administrator. So. I don't think the, and you may prove me wrong at this, but I don't think it's a huge job. It's, it's certainly not a full-time administrator to do this. But whether it's in parks and rec or whether it's where it gets housed in our city is.
So.
Is a big question.
Right, so. Um, how I'm hearing this and Tom or Colin or Jared or Steve, I'll jump in here. In our form of government, I think how this, how, what you are asking is. If we allocate funding, city manager, go direct somebody to work on this as a cemetery administrator. That's, that is what this idea is. Okay, just want to make sure I'm understanding what you're saying.
The cemetery was in the hands of the city clerk. Sort of as a volunteer person, it was in, it had a home. After our city clerk shifted, all of a sudden, the Sextons or the cemeteries don't have a home anymore. And. It is a part of our city that needs a home in my estimation, having done the work with the committee. So that would be.
Can I ask to clarify a question? Because I, I, I agree with the principle. I, I think this has, this has, has, as you say, a home. But I was, I thought we had sort of finessed this by including this and, and recognizing that the cemeteries. Both from a point of heritage, one of the side brought to its identity, as well as open public spaces, as I think we've all been to communities where. The, the, the cemeteries aren't sort of the traditional, like it's a place where you, you bury your loved ones, but it's a part of the city in terms of its heritage museum, walking. Tours, et cetera. I thought this, they had been folded into the, you know, create. Open parks and open spaces and parks, a master plan and I, and I thought. The cemetery, put into that, recognizing their, their, their unique role. And within that process, would that generate how best to handle them?
No, no, that, that, that's kind of an extensive set of policies that the Sextons has worked on. Which needs to really be agreed upon. It, it's too much detail for the parks.
I, I read your met, I was just wondering, you just had the chance to get Jesse's.
Is how a person, let's say, resident of South Burlington, has a loved one that they want to in-earn or enter in a cemetery in South Burlington. Who do they call? What are the rates? How do they get a date? How do they set up the ceremony? Who's responsible for the ceremony? If it's a headstone, right? Where do you buy the headstone? Who, you know, carves it, right? It's, it's just a set of, set of those logistical questions and how they get answered and, and then the administration of that. And included in that, right, is, is the price, right? And also, we don't have a columbarium yet, so there's just a lot missing there right now.
But ultimately, I think Jesse, going back to what Jesse said, it's you set, if the five of you. Set that direction, then it's on us to execute that. It becomes your priority. And we'll tell you what the consequences of that is. I think that's, I think that's high level.
The reason I asked about this one in terms of this, the level of lift. Is this something that can be added without jeopardizing everything else that we're doing? Uh, because it is important. And I know we haven't talked about all the other pieces. But John brought it up and it was the first one Andrew brought up, so here we are.
Okay, but I promised him five minutes on a whole pile, so maybe, maybe. Hey, so I appreciate that on the. Leadership proposal, the thermal implementation plan is there, but I think it's really, really important. We've had this climate action plan now for three years and we've not done nearly enough on buildings. And I think it's really important while we're adopting that plan to think about what we can be doing in parallel, just like we adopted the rule energy ordinance before the climate action plan. What can we be doing in parallel from a policy and ordinance perspective to move the city forward? Um, on our buildings, one, two things I'd love to see is one, tighten our current renewable energy ordinance to go from eighty-five percent. To a hundred percent. We've seen that now that's possible. O'Brien built all these homes. On Hillside, they're planning to build a new hotel. Winuski, all electric homes are completely doable with the new weatherization standards, new building standards and. I think it's a city we should just move there. The climate action plan assumes that all our new homes. Are a hundred percent net zero as a baseline to all the calculations and, and we're not even kind of doing that really. Simple baseline assumption in the climate action plan as, as we speak. So I'd love to see us do that and consider doing that. For rental buildings, I'd love to see us doing some more. We have a portfolio of other buildings. Um, I've submitted some ideas on how we can do that. Tina, I'd love to talk with you about moving that forward as policy in parallel. With working on a plan so we can, you know, get some youth into it while we're still fleshing out plan. Okay.
Can we comment on the thermal implementation plan first? Yeah, so I, I, I see what you're saying and I agree with it, but. Something that I would like to see, which we don't have today, is, you know, a thermal inspection, right? Or at the same time that electrical or fire safety is done. Uh, one thing that we don't have is anybody inspecting. Uh, whether like the activity stretch code or energy efficiency is actually being performed correctly on a building under construction, right? And so they, it's like a self-regulatory thing for the developer or the builder, right? They fill out a form, it gets filed with your deed, right? And nobody knows whether, you know, that actually was done when the building was built, unless you were there every day taking pictures, you happen to know what the code is, right? So, so that's a possibility and, and that might mean somebody else needs to be hired, you know, inside the inspection area. But I, I, I just don't, so I, I hate to leave builders, you know, thinking that they can, you know, self-regulate. Cause we're, we're already holding them to the, to the, to the code for, for, you know, fire and electrical. Why would we do the same thing for energy efficiency, right? Because we're right there when they're building the building and it, I don't think it would take that much effort to say. That's not thick enough insulation. You didn't seal those windows. You didn't put this much, you know, cellulose in the ceiling or. You know, you, whatever the new code is, you didn't adhere to it or on the external, you know, why, why, why are we not using zip system on all, all buildings? Why is that not part of it? That's just the kind of discussion I think I'd like to have because you, you need to, you know. Uh, you need to inspect things that, things that are being constructed, so.
Now you're making houses to expenses, Tim.
So, and, and you know, and I hear that argument, but every dollar you put into energy efficiency in the future saves you like ten, twenty, a hundred years down the road. Right?
I told, I was being sarcastic.
I know, you know, but I, no, but it's good to make that sarcastic comments for people to understand that, right?
It's gonna be a long five minutes.
I, I just want to call, is one other thing, Bettina, I don't mean to speak for you here. One of the things that is on the leadership team report and thinking about the, when we were talking about the, the building, the thermal act implementation plan. And making progress as we go, like don't not just waiting for that is the multi-unit weatherization program that Bettina is working on. So that is a carrot side, you know, trying to approach things from both a stick perspective and a carrot perspective, you know, the regulation is the stick. Also, how do we provide professional or how do we provide technical assistance and opportunities? So I just want to call out that it's not. Just the thermal plan, it's also that carrot component.
Yeah, and I.
Celebrate that.
And I just want to say, I mean, we've had some initial meetings with VGS and GMP and. And so it's going on and I think that this could be a great. A great way to really approach and understand what the challenges and the specific. Issues landlords would have with these things and I think that that is. That for me would be the first step before. Going to implementing a policy to say, okay, every five years, we're gonna be looking at what you did or didn't do when there's a list. So I. I see it as a bit of a gathering data, understanding what the situation is specifically here. We are. Not the same as Burlington. They have a different building stock and, and it'd be. I think it, it makes sense to me at least to try to. Get this program running, see where it works, where it doesn't, and from that develop a policy. That makes sense in terms of implementing something on the regulatory side.
So let's just keep in good contact on that. Um, I'll just go quickly through this. Lots of people talk to me about pesticides, insecticides, herbicides that the city uses. I don't think we have a pest management plan, an IPM. Um, I'd love to see us adopt one and I'd love to also see some reporting on. Um, the, our use of those products. Um, I'd love to see regular updates on our TDRs and what the stock of TDRs are, how they're selling. How the TDR program is working, because unless we get those TDRs sold, at some point, there's gonna be pressure. To unwind that, maybe unwind the NRP areas, like we've promised landowners, they could sell off their. TDRs and if that programs are working. I, I fear that, you know, some of that regulatory system will come. So I'd love some updates on that. We all know there was obliged property on Shelburne that's now being taken care of, but I think it's really easy for the city. If we had a property maintenance ordinance to have addressed that and to be proactive about future. Um, issues like that. So I've set out something really simple. You know, as a legislature and. Policy proponent of what I think we can adopt. I don't think it's a lot of words. I don't think it's that complicated or I think it will require. A lot of legal work, a lot of time. I think we should just adopt an ordinance so that we have the tools. Um, that we need to address situations like that going forward. Finally.
Can I poke on that one? Um, and staff had a lot of conversation about this one yesterday. Would you be amenable to that, the language around that shifting to a vacant building ordinance? The property management ordinance has, in municipal government, has a long history of being. Racist, classist, other things that I don't think you intend. Um, and I think your intention is really about the Pizza Hut, about graffiti, about vacant buildings, not necessarily about people. Mowing their lawns or hanging prayer flags or those kinds of things. Would you be amenable to shifting that? Okay.
Cause it's been, you know, Pizza Hut and also. The, the, the building on the corner of Dorset and Bullsham Parks Road, right? So for.
But it's a vacant building.
Right, yeah, it's a vacant building. And we had discussions about it on council before you were city manager, right? And, and, and Paul remembered that, where we were talking about. You know, clear boarding, using plexiglass to cover up windows from buildings like that until they're taken care of, but. But not letting them become, you know, damaged with broken windows and graffiti covered. And to me, number one is graffiti, right? So homeowners and business owners, if they experience graffiti, it has, we, we need a way. An ordinance that says it's gotta be cleaned up in so many hours or you start getting fines, right? And that would have generated a lot of revenue at Pizza Hut. And as you know, that the, the, the new Domino's, right, was the old Denny's, has already been tagged. Two or three times, but those owners, since they have brand new tenants, are getting in there and, and fixing it immediately, right? So to me, that's really important. I think the vacant, nothing, you know, way to take care of that is, is a good one.
Okay, last one for me. This comes out of, you know, the ash tree discussions we have over the last couple of years. But talking with our town forester, we don't have any policy around our urban street trees. Right? How to manage them? What type of diversity we want in, in, in planting, which areas prioritize, which aren't, it's kind of, as I understand. I'm kind of on the fly. I'd love to see us maybe charge NRCC. Um, with coming up with a real policy around our urban trees.
And you're specifically talking about public trees, so street trees, park trees.
Things that we control.
Folks, Matt, Nick.
Nick is amazing.
Nick is amazing.
Yeah, he has terrific ideas. This came out of a conversation that I had with him. I, I know that he would be supportive of this. That's me.
Elizabeth?
All right, you better try. I'm gonna probably be at a little bit a higher level. The two areas. That we are continuing to talk about that are on the list are really around growth management. And what we intend to do there. And I won't go into all the detail there. I think the other area that I just put a, a note on was really around affordability. And I do feel like as we look at all of our plans for the upcoming year and. And we can't ignore the fact that our school or education funding system is in trouble. So really looking at the potential to sort of be fiscally prudent around conserving budget resources where we can. That may be impacted by either federal funds or that at least we preserve some flexibility. As we develop the city budget. So it's, it's with an eye toward affordability overall in our shared taxpayer. The other areas I talked about on the additional list, and I think we've incorporated them in some ways. Is we have not heard policy recommendations from the economic development planning process yet. And we need to plan for those. Similarly, with the open space and rec master planning process. Um, inclusive of City Green. And that would run the gamut of resource requirements. I know you indicated, Jesse, that ongoing things like the library. Uh, might not be included, but I think we have heard, particularly with, you know, leadership change, that there will be. Um, in city center, there will be additional library needs, whether it's services, staffing, training, hours. So. I, I do think that should be on the list of considerations. I did put charter changes on here, not only the ones that are on the bike rack. But we did here in the steering committee about the school potentially coming back with a charter change. Um, and then I indicated also the housing committee, which I was happy to see there were some specific recommendations in here. Um, so without totally losing my voice, I'll say those are areas that I think we should. Consider along with the priorities staff has already had.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Your discussion about the things that she's listening without her having to talk again?
So the library is on the leadership team recommendations. If you want to change the wording or find. Expand expectations on that word, we're open to that. School vote is a good point. We, we should add that. And, yeah.
Mike, did you want?
No, I, I think, I think.
No, I I think, I think I said before that. The priorities that they have laid out are in alignment with what we've been thinking and working towards the last few years. You know, we have a remarkably talented professional staff, who's also incorporating uh processes that make it more data-driven. Which I think helps us to make decisions, and I think the the various sub-plans of the city plan. Have to be the priorities because just from a management standpoint, you know. If we're gonna go forward, we wanna see how all the things are interrelated, how we make the balance. I guess the last thing I would say is TIF is gonna be incredible, it has to keep on time because it is a fiscal responsibility in the board.
Thanks, Mike, uh Lori, there's also a path retreat, and you've got some things on here, did you wanna go through any of them?
Um, I could go through some of that, some of those, I'm just gonna um. Throw throw a little something on the table.
Oh, sure.
Just cause it's.
Is it a hot potato?
It's a hot potato, I just can't help myself, um, so. In our city plan, we have climate as our overarching conversation as we're looking at what we're gonna do. Going forward, and um. Climate as we are seeing is a symptom of a much bigger problem that we are facing globally and locally. And um. We have not. Nationally, internationally, been effective at a at taming the quote climate problem. And. There are environmental problems that go along with that, there are serious issues. The the cause is not climate, the cause is overconsumption. And potentially overpopulation, but. Without addressing the consumption that's happening in the uh global north and its impact. We are headed towards an adjustment, in fact, we cannot cannot realistically address climate. Without addressing consumption. And that means climate is not gonna be solved, and we are going to hit a wall. Sorry to be a bummer here, but as we are looking at. All the things we are doing, we need to look at what is the cause of climate. And what it means for how we are gonna be living ten years from now. And um. We're doing a lot around active transportation and a lot of the things that we're doing, but um. Somehow I think we need to bring into our conversations. Serious discussion about how are we going to deal with. Significant changes in how we are are all living in the not-too-distant future. Around food security, around housing, around transportation, and. What steps that we're taking in, whether it's growth management or economic development. What steps are going to perpetuate? The level of consumption and operation that we're living today, or are gonna help us move into a different place? And I think that it's easy to just say we're doing all these great things, Andrew was going electrical and doing whatever, but. Whether you listen to environmental scientists or the IPCC or anybody else. We are not turning this ship around, and we are gonna experience some very big impacts. Not just the ninety-degree weather that we had last week, but. There's a serious conversation about how are we gonna be preparing ourselves? For living very differently than we're living today. And I think we really need to bring that conversation into city planning. Because I don't know anybody that doesn't have the existential anxiety. When. And and we sort of turn away from this conversation, but it's a very real conversation. And our children and our grandchildren are gonna experience. The results of the decisions we make today. So I just wanna bring that out, it's a nice light subject for. But we really, as we're doing our planning, we have to be thinking about, we are not gonna be living the way we're living today. It doesn't matter who you talk, well, of course it matters. Ninety percent of the people that are have studied this will tell us that we can't keep doing what we're doing. And I hope we can bring it somehow into our policy conversations. Because they're all predicated on, this is what we've done for the last fifty years, this is what we're gonna do going forward. And I think we have a serious um. Issue ahead of us, so I just wanna see how we can bring that into our. All the conversations we're having and all the policy plans we're making, thinking about. How do we improve quality of life and reduce quantity?
So are, I think, I agree, you say several things, right? One is that the the city itself, right, meaning the 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 city government, right, needs. Needs to take the initiative and first of all, find a way to to burn less fossil fuels, right, but then also incorporate. It in a projection from our climate manager, if possible, what adaptations need to be taken? Or future changes in in our climate, right, which is excessive heat, excessive rain. Those are the two basic things that we're talking about and.
And food insecurity.
Well, food insecurity, that one's harder to deal with, but 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 they're keeping that in mind, right?
Except that if we keep building on our agricultural lands, we we destroy our ab- ability to feed ourselves locally when. When the food chain has problems, and we're seeing it nationally, we're even seeing it now. With with agricultural workers not being available. Because of what's happening with immigration, so. The, all these issues are compounding. But yes, what you're saying is what I'm talking.
So internal city policy, but then external to the to the residents, the city as well.
Yes, and how how, just anticipating that the way we are living today is not the way we're gonna be living tomorrow. And it's either gonna be because things collapse, or it's gonna be because we have chosen to prepare ourselves. To live comfortably in a slower. Different level of consumption than we have today. And I think we really need to bring that forward, and I'm gonna be obnoxious for the next two years on the city council. With bringing this forward because. Every month, we are hearing more about where we're headed. And it's not just climate, it's how we're living in the northern hemisphere. It is pushing us off that cliff. So we do need to think about, how do we as policymakers help? Transition to a different way of being citizens on the planet.
Do you, do you think it's a valuable exercise for the climate? Uh, managers to think about worst-case scenarios or near worst-case scenarios and how the city might deal with that?
I think we need to look at. How, what are the things that are really gonna create a resilient South Burlington and Vermont? That can. Provide the basic services that we need to all our residents. In a future world, it's gonna look different than what we have today. Which which goes to re-establishing local agriculture, which goes to. Supply chain, all kinds of stuff, how do, how do we improve our quality of life?
Or maintain.
Or maintain.
Cause I'm talking about what if we had a ten-inch rain event, right, what if we had a thirty-day, ninety-three-plus drought period, right?
Exactly.
Right, so there's a lot of infrastructure that's uh can can be affected by that, right, so stormwater, right? Could be affected by huge rain event, right? We're not as as uh susceptible as, you know, some of the lower valley communities, right, like Barry and Montpelier, right? But um, but a long-term dry spell, right, could also, I mean, we've had some of those before, but, you know, but it's coming down the pipeline worse.
Just thinking, I guess for me, sometimes I I. I think that that's a commitment that's already reflected in the city plan, and carrying out the city plan over the next eight years. Uh, lays out steps to move that in a direction. And and sometimes I think of like trying to jump to the end of the plan before we actually go through the plan. I mean, the framework, master plans, uh and growth plans and cultural plans and climate plans, they're all integrated in it. To me, it would seem a priority for us to be sure that our staff uh has the bandwidth. Uh, to finish these sort of sub-plans that lay out how this is all integrated, how this becomes affordable, how this has become equitable in terms of what we want. How, as you say, to maintain services, let alone pursue some of the ambitions, and how we will uh pay for that. In a way that is uh, uh doesn't basically uh put the burden on those at the lower income and lower opportunities. So for me, again, I I think what uh Jesse laid out is saying, you know, here are the core things that we need to do to move towards the creation of the city plan, which we all. Are supposed to use as our guiding instrument, uh you know, should be the priority, if there's additional bandwidth or something, fine, but I think. Walk, taking the steps in a thoughtful way, in an integrated way, is, I think, the most prudent way that creates this sort of. Win-win positive uh outcome, you know, because the the city plan talks about getting people out of cars, about, you know, denser living. About, uh, but it's also has to be done as, in a perceived equitable way. Does everyone have the same option for green spaces, does everyone has the same option for parks? Uh, you know, does someone ever same has the option for for services, can everyone bear the costs? Uh, and I think, again, that that the city plan lays out a very thoughtful, step-by-step approach, and I I would strongly. Encourage us to to follow the plan that, you know, was all properly adopted. Look, the things that you're um highlighting, Lori, are obviously major. Difficult issues that future generations are gonna deal with in the city, I think, from a policy and orange perspective. Doesn't have all the levers that it would need to address those things, um, so I mean, just to go quick, like. Um, we can implement some energy policy and and we should as quickly as we can, we do this. Um, land use policy, you know, we've 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 done a lot, I think we're mostly locked in at this point. You know, between the state rules and the Act forty-seven and the new order sewer maps that we adopted, I mean, I would. Would love to see more farmlands outside, but it is what it is, right? Um, from our perspective, the things that you're talking about really are things that we can lead on, it really is. Um, people changing um and recognizing the necessary changes for. A changing future, and what we can do as a council, as a city, is help educate folks and lead, and I I'd love, and I mentioned before. For us to restart those fifteen-minute conversations that used to be at the city council, where we're talking about. Climate change and related issues, cause that that's where I see we could move in this regard, leadership, not necessarily. Through policy that, you know, kind of. Moves being able to consume less, I don't know how we do that as a city.
I think we're doing tremendous work, and I I don't mean to under underscore that. But I think that this conversation just needs to move to the fore, and I think we can lead as a city. By bringing this conversation forward, not in a way that scares people, but in a way that makes it. So that we are really aware of what we're facing and we're looking at how we deal with it.
And I think the conversations you're talking about, Lori, are gonna have to happen at a more regional level. Cause I think that's where the partnerships, you know, we could really manifest some of the changes you're talking about.
I agree. And it has a strong place locally also, because. Our community is gonna be dramatically impacted and. We wanna be prepared.
Anything else?
That was enough.
So I I have a few items.
Sorry, everybody.
I I just have a couple items from path retreats that I I threw in, because everybody else does such a great job covering everything else, so. Um, I have, this this graffiti ordinance is really important to me, right, because we all saw what happened in Burlington after the pandemic, right? This like, just proliferation of like, non-decoration of public buildings, private buildings, uh. Was really awful because Burlington used to have a task force that got out within forty-eight hours, covered everything up. And the strongest message you can send to a graffiti, uh, you know, artist on quote-unquote, right, is to cover it up as soon as possible. Because that says that he will not tolerate it. And I do not want our community to have the same experience that we've had with the Pizza Hut. Uh, which has been a real source spot, uh, and even uh some of the murals underneath the uh Feral Street uh have been vandalized. And had to be completely painted over by V-Trans because they were, they were totally spoiled, so. If that means that the public arts committee needs to take an action item to provide a resource for people to wanna do. Graffiti-type art in in one specific place and celebrate that, that's great, right? We need to understand that it's, you just can't go up to a vacant building and just decorate, so. Um, also, I I want to look at some of our speed limits, because although we don't have a lot of control over Heinzburg Road, one sixteen. Coming from Heinzburg into South Burlington, right? Because we asked the state to lower that rate and we got it down to fi- five miles per hour. But I think with the amount of traffic we're seeing on Dorset Street, I'd really love to see that at thirty-five at the Shelburne Line all the way, all the way north. Uh, and currently, I think it's forty-five at the Shelburne Line, it goes down to forty, it goes down to thirty-five at Dorset Park. And there's so much development that you've got, you've got Dorset Farms, you've got Sadie Lane, you've got Black Rock, you've got Cider Mill, you've got Link. Road, you've got another house being built uh on the west side of Dorset Street. Uh, and you have a whole new development going on in Park Road, I think it's important that we give the signal to people coming in from Shelburne and and south of there that. This is a densely or uh ru- rural, I mean, it's it's a densely suburban type of residential area. And there are often people biking and walking on that road, and we need to slow things down, and then can can mention with that, we would need some enforcement. Um, and finally, Tom and I have have talked before about making sure that the uh, the water rates paid. By the multi-unit buildings uh are fair compared to single-family residences, and so. We did a little bit of initial work, I tried some some spreadsheet work on that, I I didn't get very far, but I'd love to try and pick that back up and see what we can do. Because we're, the water ordinance is is being developed now, or it's. Yeah, did we, did we pass that, or is that still?
Pass the rates.
Pass the rate. Right. So I think there there's a possibility that the multi-unit, like condo buildings or apartment buildings, uh where there's not a meter for every single unit. That they, uh, you know, cumulatively are not paying the same fair share that does some family. Unlike those other communities where there's single-family homes, they don't have water meters, where is that? We we fixed that. So.
That's moving ahead, full steam.
Full, full steam ahead, right? Where's your meters, you have, you have a meter yet?
I've offered.
You have offered.
So how do we go forward then and decide on the various items that we've all just raised? Cause they're not necessarily up there.
Yep, here's, here's a suggestion. I think we should take a five-minute break, I'm gonna write up on a flip chart, super shorthand, what I think I heard from you. I'm gonna put it up, I'm gonna be looking for three blue dots on items that you all say are as important to. Work on as the things that are up here, you can then, when you come back from your break, walk around and change. Write things that you wanna clarify or change or de-emphasize, and then we'll come back together at, say. Ten of ten, um, and walk through them. Ten of eleven, sorry, I walked through them. Does that sound like a?
The blue dots.
Or give me if I don't summarize.
Blue are good.
Blue dots are to be a place just on the things that are on the bike rack and additional stuff that you're gonna answer. And red dots would only be placed on those things that are not on the bike rack or or digital or or red dots can be put on.
But just council is dotting, don't other people dot.
I'm ready, everybody ready? Please back. Please discontinue all side conversations, we can focus on our meeting now. Um, so we're back after our great kick and our blue and red dotting and commenting and exclamation points. Some people use, but they ran out of dots, you know, this is, you didn't say there was a limit on exclamation points, so.
There was also a limit on dots.
You get.
What I would propose is, um, I walk around quickly and just try and interpret the direction you all are giving us, and then maybe spend ten minutes on that. Um, and then um, have a conversation about committee recommendations if you would like, or any, anything else that comes up. I'm good. Alright, I'm gonna start on your page and staff, you know, feel free to pipe up. Alright, I'm gonna start on your page and staff, you know, feel free to pipe up with any of any comments on. Capacity, what do you mean clarification? One of you is gonna have to do these things. Can we do them? So we understand what they're looking for. Alright, so four dots on cemeteries?
Anything more than threes?
Yeah, so yes on cemeteries, yes on, so this was uh more ti- my shorthand for more tightly regulating rental buildings. And then a second um enforcing climate regulations in buildings.
Or inspection of construction to the energy codes, is that what that is?
Enforcement inspection. Is are the three votes for both? Yes, okay. Um this is a hu- big, big change. This is staff, this is new ordinance, this is a very heavy lift.
I just wanted to flag that on the second one, um the regional Chitting County Regional Planning Commission looked into that earlier this year and their. Analysis through their legal is that it's unclear whether municipalities have enforcement authority on the energy codes. So I'm just, I I can't go any more deeply into that. There is very clear authority for us to do what the Fire Marshal's Office does, that is spelled out. There is not clear authority on energy.
Because there's no state code?
There is a state code, there's just not a clear um authority for municipalities to.
Twenty twenty six legislators item.
So, you know, that would be question one in that subject area.
My my recommendation on that is I would have some concerns that there there is limited review that we or authority we have to regulate. Buildings and it usually is in fire safety or building safety. Um it is, I don't have not seen, I would have to look, you know, do. Be decent amount of digging to figure out whether we have authority to to regulate based on climate initiatives.
So I know that we concluded we did have the authority for our thorough ledge ordinance.
We have authority to regulate heating systems. And that was that was a specific term that we're we do. This is this is much broader than that.
No, it sounds like it should focus on just the the first for now.
Well, or focus on that legal question of, is it a no or is it a gray? Is it a try? Or I'm like, you know, where are we? Can we try it? Um or is it like, no?
I mean, we we can operate under the authority that the state has given us. And I mean, I I don't I don't know the answer to that. I think it would take a legal review. I do have concerns based on what I've seen.
And I would I would suggest that. Um rather than just focusing on enforcement, um I think there are things that could be done during the permitting. Uh process to. Really bring forward to the builders and people that are doing work what the requirements are. I know when I was pulling permits back when Ray Ray was around, there was never, here's what you have to be doing. Being handed out at the time the permit was being given, just to encourage and help move that forward. I don't know if that's something Paul that you guys could incorporate into. Into your process and when builders and other people come in for permits to actually be handing out. The information that says, these are the guidelines you're supposed to be following.
I don't know how deeply we wanna go to end into any of these today, but it is a state law requirement that any permit uh that involves opening up. Um heater or cool space gets uh a copy of or a link to a copy of the residential building energy code. One, and so that takes place with every permit today.
I didn't know if there are any other ways that our front end can can promote that.
So not to all this, cuz I know this is gonna be one conversation, but the the builders do have to submit that that one piece of paper where they certify that they've complied.
They're supposed to, they self-certify.
Right, they self-certify. Um clearly, you must have some authority, because I I suppose if if we don't get that piece of paper, we can say you can't build, right?
So we, so right, we do have that authority um to make.
Authority to check that piece of paper only to see whether it's been received.
So it's a self-certification, right? So we have the authority to say you never gave us your self-certification.
Not to review whether it's accurate.
That's that's the unclear question.
I think any of anything in this realm is gonna require um program planning. Team staff planning, legal review, ordinance drafting, like I think that this is all now kind of a. Umbrella for legal review, staffing, planning, education and, you know, more clear. Uh understanding of what those processes are all within one. Doesn't mean we're gonna start enforcing something tomorrow. Red dot on TDRs, that's interesting.
I I put the red dot there and 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 no offense, um you know, the. The the city never made a guarantee to anybody when it created the TDR program that they would be able to sell their TDR at any specific price at any time. It's a market situation and the market should take care of it. We enhanced uh the the ability to use TDRs outside of the SEQ, right? For uh for for different things like uh, you know, den- density of units, stuff like that. So. I would rather not get involved in that at all, because we haven't had to so far and I think it should be left up to market forces to take care of.
We enhance, we also limit it. The question is whether the market we've created is working at all. I agree, if it's working, market was, I have no idea. Whether it's working. I don't know whether any TDRs have been sold, have any left. I I'm my my perspective is really blind to whether it's. The market has is that we've created is functional.
So if the question is about reporting on it, um we do have a state law requirement to maintain a status of these and so. It is not a substantial lift for us to be reporting to council on a, you know, alongside quarterly reports, cuz we have to have this anyway. So if you want it, we're happy to share the information. That's not.
But you were on the TDR task force, right?
I was.
Yeah, and so there was a lot of discussion about how can we enhance the transactions or enhance the transparency. Between uh the buyers and sellers, right? And really, nothing became of that, right? What became?
Well, no, no, some of that did get reflected in in the in the um new LDRs and and again, the LDRs gave and took, right?
Um I should I should note that what we can report on is whether they have been used somewhere. If two parties are making a financial transaction of a deal one with one another, it would be in the land records, but they never have to tell us, right? If I just sell them for you to buy as a future investment, we won't know about it. But you use them, we will know.
Know if they're used. And what the history is.
That we maintain, so we're happy.
Have a sense of whether the market is functioning.
Alright, so I'm seeing the only thing moving off this list are these first two, or three, depending on how you define that. Thanks. Is there any other conversation the council wants to have about moving any of the other ones off this list?
Later one on the charter and they come to a.
Yes, things absolutely may come through a different channel, yeah.
And Jesse, when you say move off the list, you mean become a project?
Jump from here over to those sheets, yeah.
So that's the cemetery's governance, climate regulation on buildings and report on TDRs, right?
Yeah, I mean, this one I don't think would actually hit the list. I think that's just kind of by reporting something we we can do. Any other advocacy for other things from the council? I'm walking away.
We'll get back to some of those things.
Alright, three red dots on council expansion. Yes, off the list, off the bike rack? Yeah, I mean, again, that's one that could come back to us through a petition. To an exclamation points for cultural plan?
Yeah, for the for the for the arts, right? Yeah, it's really important. Uh so the city has a a lot of. Of good things going for it, right? And so a a cultural plan would help you establish those things that complement all the other good things. Like, you know, the walkability, the parks, um you know, the the schools, uh or the rest of our infrastructure. The the activities that that are arts-based, right, have a huge economic draw. And so I think it's really important to make sure that we maximize that.
I I was the one without the exclamation points. Was that it to me, it just fits into what was our whole idea when we adopted the city plan was to basically adopt. Subplans that uh touch on different areas and to be sure that when we do something, we're not closing the door on something else later on or making it more complicated. To do it. So to me, it's just a common sense of how you implement a plan, which is the city plan.
And we have some, we designated some ARPA-inspired money for that, right, that's.
But it's the thing where we played for the economic growth plan and how we got it off coin was the ARPA designated money. So I thought, again, going backwards, I thought that was the general concept. Do the subplans, we have the funding, funding, we have the needed funding. So the common sense, at least to me, would be we just proceed on all the subplans.
And we did postpone that from the previous, so.
Yeah, so here's, Alana's gonna jump on me for saying this. Here's why I bike racked this one. Um so to me, this is a hundred percent a capacity thing. We are mid economic development strategic plan and we are mid parks and open space plan. Both of those are gonna have big price tags coming out of them. The same person who's gonna be implementing the climate action plan, or no. Same person who's going to be implementing the economic development strategic plan would be drafting this plan and running our TIF district and doing all of our community development activity. And I don't know if she has capacity to further all of these things. So this is gonna not because she's not amazing, just because one human. This is a capacity question. I think moving this up means we are going to have to add economic development staff capacity. See what I'm saying? Which we may all anyway have to do. I just wanna be really clear about that.
You had that same conversation jumping back since you're talking about staff member being overloaded on this. Where I wrote in, the city green is something is something that I know several of us are are pretty. Keen on having it move forward and just wanting to know what the status update is and how that. Is gonna continue.
Was there a city green?
I didn't put any blue dots on. There, I just wanted to find out where it is, cuz it's been quiet and and it's it's a high priority.
So, yeah, so we're in the land acquisition phase, which is generally a a fairly quiet phase because it involves negotiations with property owners. You know, I would say that it does fit in with the future vision for the university mall. But it also, we're talking um to the landowner uh that owns land across the street that has also been identified. Um and so we're actively working with.
So so this is one of, again, the small changes we made this year is to try and be a little more specific about what the this year thing would be. So it's integrate into the city map. That's the um kind of the. Most powerful regulatory tool you have to make this happen and then negotiate agreement with partners on land acquisition. That is. That is going to be very hard, I will say.
Has there also been conversation about public-private partnership as opposed to just land acquisition?
Do we have an executive session on this to know more details about where things did?
I think you, that's your decision.
I I would like that.
Yeah, I don't think anyone would be opposed to that.
Can we put that on the calendar?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just clarify something on the cultural plan? By the way, I I'm standing because I just flew in last night and it's like already eight P M. So the, you know, your point about that there're gonna be financial implications for the Parks and Opens Plan, for the Economic Growth Plan. But that's true for any of the subplans, they have economic implications. I guess my lot, my thinking of logic is that had we, we had committed to all these subplans as. Core pillars within our city plan, wouldn't we know, want to know the uh financial implications of all of them before we make. Decisions, because by making certain choices, make make something a little bit more expensive, make make something a little bit less expensive, or just, you know, revisit the city plan and say. We're a little bit too ambitious unless we find a more fiscal prudent way to proceed.
Uh trying to how to answer that, yes, we will want to know the financial impacts, but that's part of the development of the plan. Is that they are going to come out with, here's what you all should focus on in the short, mid and long term.
We want that for all of our stuff. I mean, this was one of the core subplans in our city plan, the cultural, yeah.
We don't pre-know that. That is the work of the plan.
Right, right. What I'm saying that we are gonna get the, what are the costs and implications of the the city? Uh the Parks and Opens Lands Plans, we're gonna get the opportunities, the costs and the benefits of the Economic Growth Plan, but yet we'll be making decisions. Without knowing what are the costs of the trade-offs for our cultural plan. Uh that's that's the only reason I put out there is that we think we want all the. It's it's got two.
To me, that's why I bike racked it. Let's just say we need to do this. It's just the sequencing of the work. The plans and the financial implications.
Yeah, so we need to, I I agree with the bike rack on this. It's important, but I don't think it's important enough to. Earn in taxpayers with, you know, another staff person. I just think we should put this in the in the queue.
Yeah, it's another staff person, I agree. Wanted to be, I just wanted to be sure, because I think when you make decisions, you want all the information before you. So we'll be making decisions without necessary implications for the cultural.
So how long is that queue? Are we thinking half a year, a year? I mean, what what am I gonna tell the Public Arts Committee? I'm just curious.
So this would mean it would be bike rack through FY twenty six. And then you, next year, you'd have to weigh against other.
Can I clarify, Jesse, that when you um crossed out the um council expansion? That is that going back to a bike rack or taken off?
I mean, if if you guys are saying red dot to bike racking it, then I'm gonna take it off the list and say, if it comes up in another conversation, you can add it in in the future.
So I think we need to have a conversation about where there's been a committee recommendation. Whether we're using this forum to take it out of consideration altogether or just move it to the bike rack. Into, you know, the future.
It was on the bike racks, so the the red dots were to say to take it off the bike rack.
I thought we were talking about what we would add to priorities this year. I didn't know that we were making a decision whether to take something up.
My red dot is to take it off the bike rack.
That's how I would have interpreted the thought, but.
Just to clarify for the public, right?
It could come back on through a citizen petition or something like that, but it's saying we're not, it's not something that council is interested in thinking about, right?
But I think I did not approach this exercise as putting red dots on things committees had recommended. That aren't aren't moving forward in this priority discussion. So. It's a little bit different because there were there were specific recommendations.
Committees are at your direction and then you guys decide whether you wanna move things forward or not. Uh library stays on. So three dots for the airport adjacent um area planning. Yes, we agree, staying on there. No other three dots. But these are. So this is fossil fuel heating replacement regulations that we have on the bike rack. We're gonna keep it on the bike rack with only two blue dots.
Yeah, how does that work? You know, going back to this previous question, unless there's three reds, uh everything remains on the bike rack or. And 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 does that include proposals put forward to other people or just the bike, things that we'd already agreed to be on the bike rack last session? We we had new ideas to be added to the bike rack that came from.
Well, I guess that's a question for you guys is, do you want those, sorry, Erica, you want those non um three things added to the bike rack?
I would prefer to finish up what we've already committed to. I think we always add.
Come by a bike rack.
Yeah, but I would introduce the bike rack. So once they go on the bike rack, they all have same priority.
I would see those going on the bike rack, because there are things that that have been brought up that are potential issues to be addressed in the future and. The bike rack just helps us not lose sight of them. It doesn't, it doesn't make them active. It just means. Dorset Street speed limits are something that. We may wanna be considering and the bike rack helps us remember.
But if that was the case, then other us, you you you, your judgment was, we really wanna talk about what we're, what we have a capacity to take on. The guidance wasn't, and add anything that you'd love to talk about. The guidance wasn't, and add anything that you'd love to talk about in some distant future, even if we don't take it on. Have that been the guidance? And I'd have also added some other issues, including saying, I would like to talk again about the. Changing and expanding the city council. So it becomes sort of a, a, a sort of a circle that we go back and forth on.
It's not a circle, Mike. What, what do you wanna talk about? I mean, we had an opportunity.
No, but the, the game was about what we wanna put on the priorities for this year, not about something that we'd like to have on the bike rack at some future date.
I think it was one of the policies we'd like to suddenly implement, and we're talking about whether we can do immediately, or if not, whether we can do them in the future.
The mind is safe from misunderstanding the guidance.
Okay, so.
So did we decide whether those are going on the bike rack?
Yeah, so money, money.
I have two saying, put everything that's not, that's less than three dots on that list on the bike rack. I have two saying yes to that. Does one person wanna join there? Yes.
I think, yeah, we should add stuff. You can add tons of stuff to the bike rack. But we really wanna, wanna add things that. We've, we mean, we think we need.
So bike rack as opposed to priorities?
Report on T D Rs I have down as the core government.
Okay. So. Uh, also fuel heating regulations will stay on the bike rack. Public tree ordinance will stay on the bike rack. Small gas engine replacement regulations stay on the bike rack.
Was the third one, I didn't quite hear you. So.
Small gas engine replacement regulation.
Lead flowers.
Oh, okay. Everything works on the bike rack here with exceptions, one that got the three votes and staying on the bike rack.
Yes.
And including the things that you proposed from your staffs.
Oh, sorry, Nick. Sorry, sorry, sorry. All right, uh, cemetery is moving to off the bike rack to regular work. We've already decided that. And then growth management plan and transportation scoping studies both got blue dots. Um, as well as vibrant seat ordinance updates. Those are all on our current proposed list, so I would say they would stay on our current proposed list.
Yeah.
And then unless anyone's okaying to take them off. We have kind of an agreed to set.
But we do have to go through the committee recommendations.
No, yeah, we have to go through committees.
So this proposed list that you gave is all staying on the bike rack where they've got a one, one blue dot, no, no blue dot. The only thing that comes up this list is that, okay.
And those things go on to it. Right. What do you wanna talk about on committees? So just for this set, what I will say is as the next step. We will update this spreadsheet, bring it back to you for adoption um at a upcoming council meeting. But I will leave it to you to how you wanna address the committee's.
Jesse, do you wanna maybe highlight for us the things that you think are the committee proposals that are already not part of the plan? Because it's, there's a lot of overlap there and it's maybe hard to parse.
Yeah.
Though I will be honest, I have not done that crosswalk, so I am happy to.
Okay, well, just maybe.
Pull those up and the staff who are responsible for those committees or their staff could quickly look at that. How about that as a. Is that like sometimes? Give me a quick minute to figure out how to, figure out how to do this. You don't mean it starts?
Maybe first. Uh, Economic Development Committee. Um, so, uh, so I would say that overarching um interest of the Economic Development Committee is to support the Economic Development Strategic Plan. And implement the plans, uh, which uh is represented uh within. The presented work plan for FY twenty six. Uh, and then most of the other items, if not all of the other items, are really um. To respond to other activities of either committees on staff led initiatives in the city where there might be a policy discussion. That they would like to participate in. Uh, so things like, they're interested in um growth management discussions. Uh, they're interested in land development regulations. Uh, uh, and specifically as these tie into their interest in workforce housing and. Um, supporting economic development through land development.
So are you saying what's on here is either on the rec, leadership team recommendation somewhere or complimentary?
Yes.
So you don't think any of the particular things we need to consider are here?
I don't believe so. I believe it all relates to either the work plan or core municipal activities. Uh, but they do support the economic. I mean, they're not specifically.
So um I'll tackle for, in the moment, housing and planning commission. Um, planning commission um is pretty. Closely aligned to what you've already got in here. There are some things in there that. Um, in our conversation with the planning commission, sort of fall below the level of what you would call out, but are sort of maintenance of the land development regulations. But to us, that's very complimentary. So I wouldn't say that there's any large initiative. Um, even though their list has different things, they sort of fall under the generally upkeep the regulations, so. We don't have any, we don't think there's any conflict in there. On the housing side, s- uh, similar, I'd say that there's one item in there, which is. Um, South Burlington's support to state and regional housing targets. Um, they talked about making a deeper, deeper. Dive into the breakdown of exact housing needs. Um, to us, that's very complimentary to, there is an overall target. Uh, they are the right body to be digging a little deeper into, uh, not just a singular number, but how does that number represent? So I think that's a very complimentary project um that is aligned. Um, so I don't think there's, that there's anything in here that is outside of what is on here. Back to an energy in a minute.
So I, I just, but little just again interruption. We've got doors open and an air conditioner running. And I like having the doors open, but I, I don't think we should have both going on cuz that's blowing cold and that's gonna get warm. Or turn off the A C.
We can't. That's not a thing in this.
Turn it up.
Lori is very climate sensitive.
Um, Paul, there was, um. There was a question that Kelsey, and I don't know if this is a you or Elizabeth thing, included when she communicated this. Um, work plan about a motion the committee made. And we've had the Housing Committee recommend that before any. Action is taken to complete a permanent conservation easement on Hubbard Analysis, be completed frozen concept, buying the property to conserved and non-conserved parcels. Were they expecting council feedback on that as part of the work plan?
Um, I think that. The, it is if council is going to be considering that, that they would like this to be part of it. So it's sort of an if then, if the, if there's no action. Then council's considering to look at that parcel, then there's no work to be done. But if they are, they'd like this to be part of it, consideration.
Question on that, I, I'm confused on why the Housing Committee. Made a motion on this. I just don't see it. Maybe Elizabeth, you can help explain it within the charge that we gave the committee to be opining on. Conservation easements. I kinda see this within the scope of the N R C C, Rexam Parks, but I don't.
Unfortunately, I was not at the meeting.
I don't see how this is part of their charge and. I, I, we, I, I think maybe we need to honestly refocus them if they think it is. I just, I just don't see it in the forebullets. That we gave them to be thinking about.
So I think that um when the committees were given guidance about what to do last month, they were um. Asked to come up with their work plan and also if as a public body, if they have any feedback on the. Uh, council's work plan overall to provide it. So I think that's why it's an emotion rather than their work plan is not necessarily. They're not asking necessarily for them to do the analysis. They're giving feedback as an opportunity to give you feedback on what you're doing today.
I understand, Paul, but I guess, I don't, I, I would have thought our committees would pass motions to give feedback on things that were, are within their scope. Well, housing is within their scope, and the problem is that I think they perceive that there is a possibility of some housing going in in Hubbard, and they wanna. Preclude us from putting, conserving the whole parcel.
That's clear, no, true. I mean, it's a park. We're not gonna put housing on a park.
But they're just trying to protect their interests if there is a chance to increase housing in South Burlington, probably is what they're doing.
With that, what they, they.
Well, I, I mean, that's, why else would they? I don't know.
When I wasn't at this meeting, but my sense is, um, I know I had gotten some feedback when I served as liaison. That the committee um want, would have liked to provide feedback on the long view proposal. At the time, and so I think this is really, I just request to understand if that is to move forward. To be made aware of it and offer this group's. Feedback.
Yeah, but I mean, Harvard Park would purchase, purchase an open space fund, though it includes any house. I understand that, so.
Yeah, but this is just a motion that they.
So, and to your point, Andrew, I just wanna say, I think that the committees. Work at our, you know, we give them recommendations for what we want them to work on. But I also want committees to be able to send ideas forward that we may not accept. But I don't wanna take away their opportunity to say, hey, I want you to consider this. So. They brought this forward. We may say that's not something we're gonna pay attention to, but I want committees to have that ability to. Feed ideas to us as well as it, so it's not just a one-way.
I agree with that within their scope. So I, I differ with you on, I don't think committees should be. Sending ideas on anything in the world. We set up committees with, with a purpose. We spend a lot of time um saying exactly. What the scope of the committee is, why it's set up, what's it supposed to be doing, so. Otherwise, there's no purpose in having a charge.
Right. Energy, Paul, are you ready for that one?
Uh, no. Trying to make sure I was focused on this conversation first, but, but in a minute.
Well, that's planning questions. I'll skip that all back.
I already covered that one.
Oh, you already covered that one. Excellent. This is.
Do we have anything from N R C C?
Public art?
Yeah. No, nothing. Uh, so. Public art committee um is uh working on um projects that are already in the proposed work plan. Garden Street and Wilson Road Streetscape. Um, they uh also, um, if the land development regulations, there's a few pieces that touch on public art. And they've had coordination at the request of the D R B in the past, so if those areas of the land use development regulations are looked at, um, they would like to weigh in. Uh, and then they are participating in the Parks and Open Space Master Plan, so continue uh to do that as a committee member on the task force. Um, and uh they, at your request or per your policy, they are managing the gallery. They will continue to do that. Um, and uh they, um. I think there's a duplication on here. Um, and then, of course, they would like to see the cultural plan, which has already been discussed, removed from the bike rack. And then, yeah.
So nothing significant that's contradicting.
Nothing that hasn't already been discussed.
Can I go to American Park and cover back? Were you gonna weigh in on public art?
Uh, so on the wrecked and park committee side, basically, kind of every year falls under the. Uh, the park and open space master plan uh and elements, which they were kind of highlighting. Be included in it or just through their engagement net. So there's nothing really additionally on top of what we have.
That's good.
Uh, I'll do energy. So uh, energy is on page three. Also on this, um, I'd say generally it is aligned to the work that's here because that's the categories that they used. Um, I would note that council. Um, has proposed to take small gas engines onto the bike rack. So that would be an item that they had assumed was gonna be moving forward, so that would remove that from them. Um, otherwise, I think it's aligned, I would say, the uh. The exact work of the committee, I think, um, you know, with Bettina's position being so new, we're s- still in the process of like. What is um Bettina's role? What is the committee's role? And so on that column of exactly what they're gonna do, might be a little um. We might wanna refine that a little bit. So for example.
Column is like what I was gonna do. Um, they didn't quite get to the, they didn't quite get to the. Yeah, they didn't quite get to their work. Um, and part of it was that they just wanted to see where it all showed up and. What if that was gonna move forward. And I will say that the small engine, we did also do a. Priority survey of like prioritizing all of these. Um, and the small gas engine replacement regulations. Was at the bottom, and that's why kind of I was put it in the bike rack to make sure that I have capacity to do all the other work. Um, so.
So the fiscal year twenty six efforts would be described as the effort, not necessarily the committee's role in the effort.
Not, they're gonna be working on that in the next year. Yes.
As their exact role. So I think with that understanding, um, then it seems totally complimentary.
Would you just be clear? So not withstanding, it's not, I guess, on our priorities in terms of like reporting. On climate action plan that's happening, they're gonna be doing that.
That is a core problem.
Right, and um, but we talked about when we passed the extension of the hot water heating, we'll study that for the next.
Yes, it might, it might, what we discussed with the committee was that it might make more sense to put that. For the beginning of F Y twenty seven, rather than doing it in F Y twenty six.
And as you know, we, we could potentially get help from that, free help from.
Yes.
One of the interesting conversations the leadership team had was, as we go year to year through the policies and strategies process. That things that previously have been considered policies and strategies become core government, like Bettina as a whole, like Anna as a whole. And so it's an interesting kind of um organizational activity to think about what, what moves to core government. And what we're just expecting through, you know, you know, experienced professional versus what are the new things that are at policy changes and new initiatives. And still obviously figuring that out. Anything else on energy? Do you want to play? Or see to do that like three times?
Do it again?
Anything else on committees that you all. Seems like they can.
I'm sorry, N R C C didn't.
Well, there's, there's been transition.
Yes.
Um, yeah, and, and when you can adopt those anytime during the year.
Yeah.
Look, on N, on N R C C, I know they've been for a few years now.
There's not one here. We have the F Y twenty five, a lot are coming forward, and F Y twenty six, they've had some discussion on, so I pulled up their minutes. I'm happy to relay a couple of the things here. Most of the, what they talked about fits in with things that are already here, um, and I had relayed some of it, so they're in leadership team recommendations and bike. Uh, the bike rack. Uh, one of the bigger things is they would like to get to Vision Zero planning, which is on the bike rack. Uh, but they were advocating for a citywide speed limit review, being kind of the first step that would feed into. A Vision Zero and with Dorset Street speed limits getting talked about, uh, that was one thing that they had advocated for. And their committee work plan, they are likely going to spend some time this year researching Vision Zero, so when this process comes around next year. Uh, we have a better idea of the lift. Um.
I think you, do, does the council know what Vision Zero is? Can you?
Yeah.
Do, this is, this is a big future lift, so, which is.
Yeah.
Which should bring forward an actual bike head work plan for them to look at, but.
Council should be endorsing them to spend a year working on.
Right, that, that would be the work plan that they would bring. It, would, that would be an item on their work plan that they would have.
It's a substantial.
Yeah. Uh, so a Vision Zero plan is, uh, it is a very specific. And it came out of, I, somewhere in New Jersey, I think, was the first place to adopt it. And the goal of it is to set a plan and actions for getting to zero fatalities on the roadway. Uh, through any crashes entirely, not just uh vulnerable users. It, uh. But there are a lot of very specific guidelines, Vision Zero.
But there are a lot of very specific guidelines, vision zero, when you use that title, puts a lot of things around it, rather than just like a safety plan. Something like that, so that's um where they are interested in learning and will be bringing to you. To approve potentially them learning what that entails a bit more. The CCRPC is doing a regional safety plan, uh but that's one of those things, it's vision zero adjacent. So vision zero is something very specific, but at the core, it's laying out a plan to get to zero fatalities on the roadway.
So. Somebody's buzzing.
So their recommendation to you to potentially look at this year was um a citywide speed limit review. That was really the only thing that's not included already in what you've seen.
So can can you at a future, for a future council meeting, ask them to provide the actual work plan?
Yes, they will be doing that, they don't meet in July, so if they're on this meeting, they will be doing one that we, they vote on to present.
I just wanna make a comment about the NRCC, so I know they haven't given us their work plan, but I imagine suspect that one of the things on work plan will be again. Um, regulations to control trees, connection to new development, and I know it's really important to them. If we don't do something, it'll kind of be the third year where we've kinda in fact put them off. I will note, it's in this plan, it's one of our actions, action forty three to do it, so um. Think we need to think really carefully about how we um report our committees and. Um, how we empower our committees, because. You know, if we don't kind of move forward with. Or ideas that come out of our committees, including this one, um I think it just is um a bit demoralizing, honestly, to. Disempowers their work, so I mean, I would personally wanna move forward, I know we didn't get enough votes somewhere to do that, but. It's um, doesn't send a great message to them.
The question is, how how much work did that take? Is it, is it like? Small to medium, I don't know.
I think um to answer your question, Tim, I think it depends on the scope. Of what is being considered there, and you know, is it something that is complimentary to the remainder of the land development regulations? Or is it um, is it, is it creating new policy um uh conflicts?
Is this being embedded in the LDRs?
Well, regardless of where it lives.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, is it, and and that becomes the question, right, if it's, if it's um something that is very complimentary to. Then the, then the primary workload will frankly be later on terms of enforcement. Um, if it is something that is directly creating um, you know, uh uh cross purposes. And I'm not, not saying it is, I'm just saying that's the question, that is a heavy policy lift, then followed by that, so I think that that's the question.
I mean, what I understood they were trying to accomplish is that if you have a parcel which has like key specimen trees. You know, older trees that are important to the ecosystem to have a policy to protect those trees. Or for developer to compensate and, you know, however that works for taking down that tree or replant or something. That's, that that I think is the direction they want to, I don't know, Laura, you've been in those conversations.
That's, that's a lot of what they're looking for, and it gets complicated because. Private landowners can do what they want with their property, and if this gets embedded in the LDRs. And I wanna develop my property and I wanna take the trees down, I'm gonna do it before I go to the, to the town, so. There's a, it's a tough area to to figure out how to do enforcement. Um, if, if I tell you that on your parcel of land, if you come for a, for a development project. You can't touch these trees. I've done it before I come to you. So, how do you, and and I think it's an important thing to have a conversation about, and I would love to see. Staff be able to have a conversation about this and see if you can come up with. An elegant way to deal with it, because it is a legitimate concern.
So, can I, sorry, I'm a little, haven't been involved in these conversations. Wouldn't a conversation like that follow us leading on what we're doing with our trees? Like, shouldn't the first part of that be a public tree plan about what, how we're managing our trees and how we might. If if there's like a replacement fee in a future private tree ordinance, that it would feed, that it would be informed by a public tree ordinance. If if we're really gonna focus on trees, shouldn't we talk about what we're doing, prioritize the conversation about what we're doing with public trees before. We have a conversation about what we're doing in private trees?
In a, in an ideal world, I would say absolutely. But the NRCC brought this forward uh. Oh, almost two years ago, and made a presentation to the, to the planning commission, and it was. It appeared, it appeared that it was moving forward and then it got stopped, and so. The Andrew's point, how do we, how do we? Deal with an initiative that has already. Had legs, and had had significant effort put in.
I I think what you're saying, I think that things are complimentary, Jesse, I don't think that in my mind, they're sequential necessarily. Um, there certainly are areas in the city that have, I think, you know, um. Important. Trees that provide habitat and biodiversity that are not on sale, because we don't plant those kind of trees, and we don't have trees that are two hundred years old like that. So I I I I think these things are different, um you know, I did propose that we do a public replant, so yes, I'm all in favor of that. I'm all in favor of this too, I think they're, they're complimentary, not sequential.
Well, they, but it could be sequential if we at least get the city part done first, right, and then. And then it creates a runway for the second part, right? Because then we can, because at least then they get something that we, that gets folded into permits, right?
I'd be all in favor of doing something, yes.
Yes.
It's good to take one big bite or a small bite out of something to get.
Since we only got one or two dots on things, is it possible for this conversation to be something that. Sit somewhere with with staff to just see if there's a. A sense of a, of a way that this could actually move forward logistically. And it might, it might sit with Nick.
Many of you have met Nick, he's great.
Nick is amazing.
He's got a big workload ahead of him, but this is something he's very interested in, uh and I am specifically talking.
The public or the private?
Specifically talking about the public side of this discussion. Um, we're not ready to move on to the private side, I would say that's a much bigger discussion in my mind. Because even with the public tree side, once we have an overarching policy developed. The regulatory mechanisms for that live in a bunch of different places, they live in the public work specs, they live in the LDRs, they live in the city ordinance. So then it kind of moves outside a public works thing, frankly, and I'm involving Colin and Paul. And we gotta make sure they all merge together well, um so briefly, I think you're gonna see some movement on this. Because Nick's on board, he's very interested, um and we'll be talking about it, I'm sure he'll be back to NRCC. And he'd be looking forward to that, um and we're just gonna find a time when we don't need him out pruning trees. Uh, as well to to make some time for this sort of thing, yeah. So can we then move public tree plan off the bike rack? It sounds like it's something we are working on, in fact. I mean, if if we're working on it.
But I'm in favor of that.
To me, it makes sense to start with educating council on what Nick's doing. And the scope of the work and at least get a baseline for what the public side would look like. Because we've gone through the process that it's not on. The list right now, but there's information with the current staff member that could be shared and help move it in the right direction.
Yeah, I think you started that with NRCC, I know not everybody was at that meeting, um but him and I have been talking about that, so. But just to be very clear, this is the public owned trees.
Yes.
Uh, we're not ready, I'm personally not ready to dive into the private side, I I'd like to get a handle on what we're doing, get agreement on that, on, you know, everything in the streets. Um, and I guess I'll just remind folks, we have one city arborist for all of our public trees, so once policy starts getting set, I think you know. Where we're gonna go uh with that discussion, the staffing standpoint.
How many trees? I think it's like twenty thousand, right? Uh, and there's quite a few.
Three trees we have mapped, yeah, there's thousands, of course, sixty, eight thousand.
Is there a GIS map of all of them?
Every tree in Red Rocks is on V I S.
And species?
It does include species information.
Very good.
Nick is, Nick is in the process of working with our new G S analyst to update that data set, so he can, so it meets his needs.
Is it, so is there a phone app for that, that you just stand next to the tree and go?
Uh, there can be.
Yeah, there you go. Good, that's an accomplishment.
Um, I guess uh to to the other half of this, the private one, I agree with Tom that, you know, it's, it's, we're, we're not ready for that. But when, if and when the council does wanna take it on, um or have it taken on, I think the. The 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 first question that really needs to be assessed is what's the objective and what are the tools to do it? Um, I very much appreciate the volun- that the time that committee members put in. They also went straight to a tool to implement a thing, and that may or may not be the best way to accomplish the goal. By identifying, so so I guess I would encourage that when the city is ready, that that is a way to do a thing. But taking a step backwards to say, what's the objective, what are the ways that we can accomplish it? Um, and then it complimentary to all of our other goals in the city, and then uh advancing that tool. It it, I think it felt a little bit like, here's a solution to a problem that hasn't been fully defined and fleshed out yet, to be frank.
So is there a way to communicate this effectively to the NRCC? Either through, who's the staff that is on now?
Silken.
Silken.
Silken, whether it comes from Silken, or I mean, I can report back what's been said here. But I think, I know that there's a fair bit of passion around this in the NRCC. And if there were a way that this discussion could be effectively relayed back to them, so they understand. The why and the path forward, that would be really helpful.
Are you the coun- you're the council?
The council is on.
So, I'll, I think it is your, you, the council is setting a series of priorities for the year. And so I think to you and Silken together.
I'll work with Silken, I guess, because what you were describing, Paul, I'm not sure that I can convey effectively. Um, as to. Using a specific tool or what the different ways are, so that they know it's not just dropped, but that there's. It's more complicated than just the ordinance that they put forward to you.
If I can paraphrase, I think what Paul said, and maybe it's not that complicated, I think what you're saying, the NRCC should come up with a five bullet points, these are the goals we wanna accomplish. Right, and this, this is what we'd like, you know, some tool have happened. And then with those goals laid out, we can talk about those goals, whether those are policy goals we agree with, and if so, tools for implementing them, is that? Did I paraphrase?
But this isn't a, this isn't a priority now, so.
Right, but I think, when, when, well, I think that that becomes your choice, right, so. When, that's a good paraphrasing of when you want them to spend time on that of the actions, and then I would say. Whenever you choose, whether it's this year, next year, whenever, or or not, to have them report to you with. Uh, with he- here, here are the goals and get reaction before they go down developing a tool.
But what I'm hearing right now is that this is off the table until a public tree policy is.
From a capacity perspective, that's what we think is the first priority.
But also, they haven't submitted their work plan to you, but just for the, for the decision making today, I think the message is. The council, well, hasn't adopted it yet, is moving the public tree plan to the priority for this year.
Yes.
You, maybe you bring forward what you wanna work on this year, maybe it's setting up what your high level goals are for a private tree ordinance. And then that will come back to you at a future meeting for you, five of you to actually have a conversation about. Do you want them to do that work, or is that the policy direction you want the city to go with?
Right, good, and to piggyback that, I also heard that there is not the staff capacity to take it on at this point. With everything else that's happening.
That we would like to prioritize public treats.
Yeah, but just to be clear, I mean, the NRCC, if we wanted them to, I do, could think about what their goals are. And that, that's some work for them while it's on the bike rack, and after they get done with that. We could uh then determine whether the staff capacity move that forward, right, there's nothing to stop the committee from using their time to do that.
Well, I think what Laurie was articulating in the beginning was that that is exactly the, the challenge we've gotten in in past years, is that they have spent a lot of time. Discussing something that you all had and said you wanted them to discuss, and then it got sidetracked and they felt disappowered.
Just that they do it, and then it doesn't get active, that will be a second slam.
It's on the bike rack, so I mean, it's something that we're interested in. Um, so, we're moving forward with something, they should be a little bit pleased with, with what, what's coming out of this meeting to start.
Awesome.
But they need to develop their work. Need a work plan.
Alright, with five minutes left, you guys did a great job, I think we are very close to an adopted set. Last few minutes, any, we don't need to go around in a circle, but. Are you, is anyone holding anything that you really wanna be sure gets on the table today? Would you like to celebrate the work of a colleague or any final thoughts?
Can I say the Rex and Parks um agenda this year was like, like home run, I mean. This, I mean, I've gotten such. Brought to that space has just been transformative, so thank you.
Ditto, big ditto.
The plus one.
Thank you.
Have the people seen Adam's or our uh branded bouncy house?
So, that's a truck, do, do we own that? Can you bring it to my front yard next day?
Things for that.
One other thing that I would love to see happen or be discussed again in the future, the simple would be. Actually getting a facilities tour together, which we have talked about in the past, and I would, I I think it would be really helpful to. To actually do that, um and. In terms of celebrate, I just think that the work that South Burlington is doing and. This team as a whole is doing is pretty remarkable, and I, I um. In spite of my dour words earlier, um, which I think are really important, I, I'm. Constantly amazed by what South Burlington is, Burlington is accomplishing, and um. Everybody here should feel really proud.
And I would just like to say, every time I'm in this building, this, this building is really incredible, I mean, uh. It it's not just the space, but it's, of course, it's the staff, the people, the public, right, the council, but. Between the library and the senior center and our auditorium, right, and and all the staff offices. Um, this, this really is a hub for city center, right? And 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 the former councils have called it the anchor, right, you know, and they were talking about the anchor, and like, this is never gonna happen, it's not really an anchor. But it is a, it really is a cultural city anchor, and I just wanna acknowledge that, uh despite the fact that I voted no. But, but I voted no, knowing that there were three yeses for it. It's, and I, and it's not that I regret that vote, it's just that I just wanna acknowledge that this, this really is a very special space. Both for its, its, you know, or, or its physical, its space and for the people there, so thank you.
And if I can just add to that, uh Tim, um to our uh crew who takes care of this building, in particular, Josh.
Yeah.
There's so much passion for keeping it, it looks like the day it opened, and that is not.
Yeah.
By coincidence, by, they put so much heart into keeping it looking tip top all the time for everybody.
I agree.
And.
Our custodial staff is phenomenal, three of them across all facilities, they are.
House is a good house.
And, and um, I think Martha's gonna be. Moving on soon, and am I correct, Martha?
No.
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 It happens, it does.
Sorry Martha. I don't get names right all the time, sorry.
I, I hear you.
And, uh, I just wanted to, to acknowledge that, cause. A big part of what makes this building special is the library, and a big part of that is the work you've done.
Thank you.
We will have an opportunity to celebrate Jennifer, she's with us until October, so celebrate her later in the fall and really. Do wanna thank her for giving us a long runway, so we can do a really thorough recruitment process. And I'm hoping that this is a position that's really easy to recruit for because of the work that she has done. And a lot have done to make this facility the, the cultural hub it is, and that will have lots of leaders wanting to come in. And lead it in the future, so if you know of any phenomenal library directors, send them Maddie's way.
Peter Taylor, I'm, I'm the charter committee. If I heard earlier in the meeting, the school boards thinking about maybe requesting a charter change to change their. Budget vote date, is that correct? Have they made that decision or they're just thinking about it?
We're waiting to receive a request from them.
If that request comes through, then that becomes a priority, because it comes through, or how does that? Fit in with the priorities, the reason I'm asking is because. Would you want a separate vote date for the school versus city election day? We used to have all those elections later in the year, then we moved them both earlier in the year. And do we wanna separate them, and those are all the questions that you're gonna have to consider. Is that part of what should be on your list of priorities to discuss, or do you wait till you hear from the school board?
So what we talked, what the steering committee talked about last, last, last week? School board and city council together was that they were entertain, the school board was entertaining this idea. And would make an official request, and one of the things together we talked about was. All of those implications that we would need to think, that collectively, the school board, we're asking the school board to think through. Then the council would need to think through, likely I would imagine, typically the council asks the charter committee to help with thinking that through. Um, you know, there's the city, do we want the same day as the school, city vote, what do we do on years where there's a presidential primary, blah, 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 blah. So, yes, Peter, I think that if the school board comes forward with an official request, all of those items would be. Would rise to a public conversation.
And the other piece that came up around that was with all the changes that are happening around school funding and how schools are. Operating, we don't even know whether, whether it's gonna be moot conversation at some point, so. It's still down the road before it becomes serious.
And you have a new school board chair, right, and you have some things going on within the school board, so it could be a while.
And one last thing is a sexton, uh, July twelfth is a Saturday. We have a work day over at Eldridge Cemetery volunteer. We're gonna be cleaning stones and repairing stones, anybody wants to have fun on a Saturday morning? Welcome to join us, there'll be something in the other paper, and I think there already has.
Thank you all very, very much.
Or is there any other business? Motion to adjourn.
Well, it, it was a lot, didn't make any other lists, I, I really wanted to, for the city council to consider. We can take on big projects, we did it with the open space fund, we can do the same thing with a pool in our rec center, and it's gonna be really desperately needed with. Hotter, longer summers, um, I know a lot of families are already starting, they used to depend on the lake, but because of poor quality. Um, water days, they're now driving to Essex or just Saint Albans to swim with friends, they're. We're forcing people into their cars because we're not taking care of their needs here, so please consider that.
Thank you, the issue that came up with Andrew and me at the previous night out, uh, with, uh, talked to the counselor tent, and a city member. Resident came up and said, if Saint Albans can have a hard act pool, why can't we have a pool? So, um, and we talked about it for quite a while, right, and so it, it is something, it's something, cause Essex Pool is heavily used, right?
By our, by our, our residents.
And, uh, so.
I also, I imagine, and Adam correctly, I think a lot of that conversation will also come out of the Parks and Open Space Master Plan.
Can I just encourage you to fill out the survey if you haven't?
So no other business, motion to adjourn?
Second.
Yeah, a motion of second, all those in favor say aye. Thank you very much, have a nice day, staff, thanks for taking your time out of your day to come to this.